Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Welcome. On your county future receiving. This is meeting number 10-1, Thursday night, 29th of October. Unbelievable. Ten over five thirty in the morning. And we shall begin with public comments. And you'll have three minutes to name and address the record. Come forward if you can.
Yes.
Ladies first.
So I am Marcy Consiglio from Moab House, and this is our house mom, Lori Manteghi. And we are here because we wanted to just extend our gratitude to the commissioners sitting here. They came to our ribbon cutting on February thirteenth. And we are so grateful that you guys came and spent some time with us. And I wanted to update you, as I was saying to Carol just a moment ago. We are at capacity. We have hit seven young adults. We had five move in in the month of May. And I also want to report that one of our young adults that has been up with us since December, when we opened of 2023, is graduating from high school. And we are so grateful to you guys for everything that you're doing. We have a little something for you guys to commemorate that this moment. Gina, this is yours.
Thank you.
We have used this picture in advertising that went out to the eighty-eight counties in Ohio to let them know that you guys support us and are very, very encouraging of what we're doing for former foster youth.
Can you give like a two-minute real quick, what do you guys do?
Yeah, absolutely. Lori, you want to start?
Yeah, so we are a transitional living. We are a transitional living home for kids who aged out of the foster care system. So kids from age eighteen to twenty-one can come and stay with us. And when they stay with us, me and my husband live there on site. We have eight rooms. And they can learn how to do things that they weren't able to do in the foster care system, get their driver's licenses, make sure they have a savings account, save for the future, get a job, do all of these things. So coming out of the foster care system, a lot of times they're left to their own regards. And how many of you have children that were ready to be on their own at eighteen? These guys need the support. So they're here with us. We can wrap our arms around them, love them, care for them, and help them be prepared.
And just to let you know, when we sent out those mailings, we got a lot of response from the counties across Ohio that we need this desperately. So we are, we will, we have plans to grow. So this isn't the only house that we will have.
This is, this is the greatest thing that's part of campus care.
Yes.
And what you did is because of the campus care being one of zero in the state.
Yes.
Your organization will be part of that group that will be able to move across the state of Ohio for your services.
Yes.
Because I've never seen so many young people homeless on the streets as I've seen this year. It's disheartening. And I'm in the park all the time because I live over there and I walk. And I, I just, I'm blown away.
Yeah.
To see that if you're out of the, if you're aged out, that people actually move you out of that home because you're not collecting from that anymore. Makes me want to just, it's too tough for these young people on the street today. Very difficult. We're in a different era.
And being at the campus of care has been such an amazing thing for us because it's quiet there. It's peaceful. Most kids are coming from, you know, group homes and things like that that are always typically in the inner city.
You're crazy.
So, but we thank you guys.
Thank you guys for everything.
Absolutely.
Really, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're building a little bit void and adapt and think about the people who know they're aging out. And where to go. Well, now we're like, I'm just not ready. And you're there to help because that's probably the most vulnerable part of their time. It's like, what's my house? I don't have my home actually. I got a plan. How do I, how do I fix that?
Right.
And yours for helping us. But we thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for this. This was the most. Exactly. That's true.
Well, that is the ribbon from the actual ribbon. Well, now it's framed.
Say hello, we're trying to.
You did a very nice one.
Thank you so much. Okay. Next.
Good morning, county commissioners. I just want to let you know, outside of you all being our elected county commissioners, I always consider you all, all three, my friends. But I'm coming to you today just to bring some concerns from the community concerning what we discussed at the previous meeting. Kenneth Simon, one thirty-three Chipsey Lane, Youngstown, Ohio, four four five zero five. Of course, the pastor of New Bethel Baptist Church, and I'm the chairman of the Community Mobilization Coalition that I represent at this moment. So to the commissioners, on behalf of the twenty-five minority organizations that make up the Greater Youngstown Community Mobilization Coalition, I would like to again address the issue of the proposal to the Board of Elections and possibly other county departments and offices to the counties recently purchased Austintown building and express our concerns. The first concern that has not been addressed is the fact that this move has been proposed and is being pushed by the Board of Elections without any public hearings or input from the residents of the county that it would affect the most. Have the commissioners pushed for any public hearings on this critical issue? You can answer that later. Youngstown is still the county seat and has the most registered voters in the county. The essential departments of the county have always been located in the county seat. Now, we do appreciate the commitment commissioners made last week to keep jobs and family services in the city. We thank you for that commitment. But moving the Board of Elections outside of the city would further disenfranchise voters in the city of Youngstown who already have challenges with transportation to participate in the election process. Again, we are not questioning or challenging the conditions of the current facility on Oak Hill Avenue that houses the Board of Election and other county agencies. Our concern is why we are moving these essential services outside of the county seat when there are plenty of options within the city of Youngstown to accommodate the needs of all the departments. At last week's meeting, one of your responses was to submit some recommendations or suggestions concerning sites within the city. I have attached a list of recommendations, and I will give you those after I finish my presentation. I just wanted to know, have the commissioners done any research and investigation into other options to consider within the city that would help the most vulnerable population to access the essential services they need? As I mentioned in last week's meeting, we are already dealing with a climate created by our national and state government leaders that marginalizes minorities, people of color, and impoverished citizens of all races in our nation and is insensitive to the needs of the residents of our inner cities. We do not expect our elected county commissioners to make critical decisions like this one that affect the most vulnerable in the same insensitive manner. We are still formally requesting that our county leaders hear and consider the concerns we raised to you today, reconsider this move, schedule public hearings on this matter, and respond to the Community Mobilization Coalition directly before a final decision is made. I'm done. Sincerely, Kenneth L. Simon, Chairman, Community Mobilization Coalition. And I will forward a copy of the this, the recommendations. Just real quickly, recommended sites for the Board of Elections, we have the Nathaniel Jones Federal Building, ten East Commerce Street, W.J. Carbon Office Tower, thirteen fifty-fifth Avenue, former Chilcan Buildings and Property. My dear councilors and sisters recommended that a few weeks ago. The former Eastern Gateway Community College Building, one of the newer Youngstown City School Buildings that will be vacated under their new reconfiguration plan, building on vacant land in the downtown area or building on even vacant property adjacent to the Oak Hill facility, current Oak Hill facility that the county owns. These are some recommendations that I am submitting to you today in behalf of the Mobilization Coalition.
Thank you, Pastor. Very much. Thank you for the recommendations.
And give Carol one more chance.
And it was probably come here every week with the premise that we'd made a decision to leave the Board of Elections or that it's going to Austin Town. None of that is true. Again, we're bringing national issues into saying, you know, we're, we're doing that locally. None of that is true. None of that. I just want to.
Well, it, it just, it just. The, the, the way the inner city residents feel, it, it feels the same way.
You can educate and tell, no decision has been made in any, in any regard to how we're moving, where we're moving, or why we're moving. We know, we know there's a need here at some point.
And we're not arguing about that, yes.
But to say that, you know, we're perpetuating this national thing that you're trying to do, that's not fair to me. That's just not fair. As your friend, I can say that.
Yeah, well, thank you. And these residents here in the city are saying it's not fair to move the Board of Elections to make us, make them go all the way. Okay, but we just want to make sure you hear it loud and clear.
Franchi. Thank you, thank you. Listen, y'all. First off, my name is Anita Davis, A-N-I-T-A-D-A-B-I-S. I'll list the addresses, twenty-six South Phelps Street, Youngstown Hall, four four five oh three. I am Youngstown Sixth Ward City Council, and anyone who knows me knows that I don't come with a prepared speech. I stutter a lot and I wing a lot of things. First off, you were reading my mind about those locations. Thank you, sir. Let me say this, and I'll speak quite bluntly. I'm not a tactile person. It may not be a reflection of the national, but I sure do feel like the national. Okay. Youngstown, while we have a decrease in population, we are still almost one-third of the county's population. And to move this, if there's an idea to move this out of downtown Youngstown, it is so wrong. And if you, you keep saying it's, it's not the plan, but we have all experienced that, those lies before.
Yes.
Okay. Said I was a pretty PC. Okay, listen, we had to, we got, we got shafted. Good word? We got shafted with the judicial things and things like that, and we don't want to get shafted again. When you buy a building out there, you know it's gonna, it's gonna take something. It didn't buy for no reason. Maybe you don't want to, tell us what the reason is, but we have a feeling that there's a reason because you want to disenfranchise us. And taking this Board of Elections down there or out there. Okay. You saw what happened with this election, how close it was.
Yes.
Okay. Can you imagine if it had been out in Austintown? I have no doubt that we would have had a different election outcome. Okay. It will have a different election outcome with your races, with my own race, and things like that. But to take it all the way out there, that is to make, to give us the same effect of being back at six percent of the population. Maybe y'all don't remember, you know what I'm talking about. Okay, because that's what we were. So taking it out there is so wrong. You, you say you're not trying to disenfranchise us, but if it goes out there, it will be disenfranchising us. Now, listen, I have a sixth ward meeting tonight at five o'clock at Newport Library. It's like a public hearing. I'm gonna echo what the padre said. I always call him padre, y'all. Okay. I'm gonna echo what he said, though. Why don't you have a hearing? Y'all have a hearing and demand that your, or request that your Board of Elections come to that public hearing and face all of us, their constituents. Okay, that's what we're gonna ask you and keep asking you. Please, have a public hearing and invite the Board of Elections to come to that public hearing. Thank you, and I'm done, and I didn't swear.
There, there has been talk about movement. Big building is ours. Want to that building, which is a perfect space location for that bus stop and the front of the whole line yard. But because the offices that were discussed in the beginning to be in that building are already in the town to, to, and all part led building, planning in places in that respect that are already there. That was the design. Then we looked at Board of Elections as being a part of that building and having a space that that would be an area. Now, I had already said this, and I think my apologies for that. The rest of the J, the Oak Hill building, the JFS Department will never be the city. Finding a location for that is what we're trying to do as we, we move through the plan. We have different locations, some of which are on this list that we were looking at. And that's not definite, but it will be in the city, if not new construction in the city. So the hub is still here, as I have always said when I was on City Council. We are the hub of the, of the town. But we also need to move in a direction where we respect other people other than our, I mean, I live in Youngstown, I know Gina lives in Youngstown. We have to respect the people that don't live in our areas. They live out in suburbs. So this is, this is not a quick decision. It hasn't been. We are looking at it. We do need to move out of Oak Hill eventually. But we need to have an area where it fits for everybody to be a part of it. Plus, remember one thing, you also need parking. You need area for that parking. You know, if you're gonna spend money and build, you need to have parking to facilitate everybody going there. So, I mean, that's where we are right now. I don't know that who might be saying that it's a done deal, because that's probably not the truth. So I want you to hear that. Okay, I said last week, I'm saying it again today, the same thing.
I, I just like to say that, you know, I'm one of the last commissioners. I was the one that initiated Oak Hill Ramisaw Center years ago when I first got elected. Because I wanted all the agencies in the city to be in here. Make the South Side strong, consolidate all the agencies. And we did that. And I'm gonna sit here and tell you, it breaks my heart. We're gonna be moving out of Oak Hill. And I, I don't want to see it happen, but that seems to be where the wind is blowing. That's eleven acre campus there. But there are some issues in that building. You're not going to fund it. It's okay. And we need to look at building a brand-new structure in the city of Youngstown. I do not support the Patriot Building. I already know. Okay. But in any event, we own the building. I want to keep all city agencies of the county within the city of Youngstown. I have said that hundreds of times over and over. If that's the will of the Board, great. If it isn't, then I will, I will vote my conscience. I feel that we need to keep agencies in the city of the county because it is the county's key. So I just want to make that very clear. Parking is an issue. You know, Oak Hill had plenty of parking up there. So if we could find a campus, something like that in the city, a residence could pull up. People have issues blocking. You know, not all of us are healthy. They want to be able to pull up and get service. That is what I am looking at. If in fact, we move out of Oak Hill, we have to have a similar place that's easy for the public, that helps the public have access to these agencies, because we have a lot of agencies. And I think all of us want to see that happen up here. So I just wanted to be very clear on my issue, on my side, how I feel about what's happening. I feel your passion, and I, I can see it on your faces. You have a concern. And we should, and if we do, maybe we should have a public hearing. Next, I just, Gina, I just want to make one more comment.
I came in, the vote to buy the building was taken five weeks prior to my taking my seat when I was elected. And I did ask at that time if they'd wait for purchasing the building because I wanted to look at what the ramifications would be wherever they were fit best. And I wasn't, I wasn't given that courtesy, and I understand that. That was a different story. But I knew that there would be issues. I didn't know exactly what all the issues would be. But I said, coming in as a new commissioner, I'll, why do I need this, this thrown on my plate? I said, it'd be better if we just wait. And the decision was made not to wait. Now we have it, and now I have to make decisions with this building in Austintown. And I just want, I just want to set for record, in case anybody doesn't remember, I asked them, just wait, wait the whole devotee. I said, let me look at it because I'll be there. I'll be sitting there in five weeks, and I want to know whatever all the ramifications are, what, what's good about it, what's bad about it, what kind of plan we have. And I wasn't afforded that yet. Now I'm doing that consequence. It all up and certainly the backlash from making a move out there. I just want to say that. Thank you. Next.
Thank you. Good morning and greetings, commissioners. My name is Michael P. Saccone. My residential address is eighteen South Edchell Avenue, Youngstown, Ohio, four four five one five, that is located in Austintown Township. And as Mr. Traficanti stated, that I am the clerk of courts. But my place of employment is one twenty Market Street, Youngstown, Ohio, four four five oh three. I am here today to, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but to echo the concerns of Pastor Simon and the Community Mobilization Coalition. While I may not agree perhaps with what they believe may be the premise for the moving of the Board of Elections to Austintown, I believe it's a problem. I believe it's a problem when we are hemorrhaging county offices out of the county seat. There's a reason why we have county seats. They are to be the hub of governmental activity. And as such, they also provide economic activity to the city of Youngstown and the, and other county seats. I maintain our automobile and watercraft title office at Oak Hill in the city of Youngstown. And this, my, my, this position is not a new position that I've had. I appreciate the Community Mobilization Coalition for its political forums and always being able to give an individual running for office the ability to state their plan. And they've been fair to me, and I think they're fair to all the candidates. And I stated back when I was a candidate for clerk of courts that I believed that this, at least the main title office should remain in the city of Youngstown. It doesn't, I'm not saying I shouldn't have satellite offices to serve the county. We operate one in the extreme western portion of the county in Sebring. But I, I do oppose the moving of proposed county offices out of the city. The city of Youngstown has already suffered enough. I think the majority of the city is a food desert. People should not have to live in an area where they have to take a bus that takes them an hour to get somewhere to buy groceries, let alone receive governmental services. And I know that my title office provides services to residents of the city of Youngstown and business people of the city of Youngstown. There are various, I don't think we have any new car dealerships in the city, but we do have many used car dealerships in the city. And that money contributes greatly to the CTAF Fund, which is funded entirely through fees and services, no taxpayer money expended. And we currently have approximately two million fifty-six thousand dollars in the CTAF Fund. That is all money that was brought in through a quasi-business that's being run in the city of Youngstown. I want to continue to do business in the city of Youngstown. I want the people of the, of the county seat to have access to governmental offices. And I, I did tour the Patriot Building. I toured it. It's a lovely building. It's a lovely building. The Port Authority had owned it. I don't know who commissioned the architectural renderings, but there are multiple architectural renderings that we showed that did show the Board of Elections being placed there along with the title office and other county offices. Another concern is you move all of these county employees out to Austintown, the city's going to be drained of our income tax revenue at two point seven five percent. I find that absolutely deplorable. And I, I want to work with City Council. I see Councilwoman Davis is here. Maybe perhaps our president of council coming up. I want to work with her, work with City Council. Frankly, I wish that your colleagues were here with you. And the mayor. Yes, but I would like to work with the mayor and City Council to come, come to some resolution and with our Board of Commissioners. Thank you.
Can I ask you something?
You may.
Time is your, like, do I have the hours of your department up here? You don't quit before four p.m.
No, we do not. And if we. Eight, eight a.m. to four p.m. Yes, and I have heard, you echoed that to me, too. So if you, if.
I did.
If, and I am there, I, I tend to be there at least half a day usually.
You have somebody asking if you take the titles.
So they take, take tickets and such. Yes, but there's only eight windows, so.
Well, I mean.
You know how busy you've gotten, complaints.
Well.
They shut it off at two thirty.
Well, if they, if they are, if they're shutting it off at two thirty, please let me, give me names of people that did it, and I will.
Actually called the Sheriff's Department to see if there was.
Okay. Well, you know, a lot of people wanting, wanting their title service. I don't, I don't know. I don't, I, I, there's a deputy there that I believe our, our, our fund generously pays for the security. Our, our.
The person on the window saying to close at two thirty.
No. It's, well, who told you that, Commissioner? It seems like this is a diversion from what I came up here to discuss. I want to have a title office in the city of Youngstown that has fifteen windows and accommodate people. I want to have Saturday hours, but I, I can't do that right now because I have a collective bargaining agreement and I'm negotiating in good faith with ASME, American Federation of State County Municipal Employees Council Eight, to make that an issue where we can expand our services more. I've only been in office for five months, and as, as have you. So I, and I, and I can appreciate your statement that, you know, when, when this was voted on, you were kind of left in the dark. I, I know what that's like, Commissioner Traficanti. I know what that's like. Because I did not have a transition. And there used to be a time when, you know, men could be men and women could be women. When you lost an election, you called, you get called the person you lost and, and you, and you worked on a transition. I did not have that, but that's okay. I'm thankful for the Ohio Clerk of Courts Association. They have been phenomenal. They're a great organization. We travel there monthly to their meetings, got a lot of great information regarding title. And things at the title office will get better. That's, we have, I, five months into a four-year term. Things will get better. Thank you. And I thank you for.
Okay, next. Okay, we appreciate all of the comments. That being said, we'll move into the business portion. And you're all asked for.
Motion for approval, appreciate the mental importance of making the twenty perfect engagement on the second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Di Fabio?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy Wiggani? Commissioner Traficanti?
Yes, Gerald Humphrey?
Motion for approval of Gerald entering number one.
Roll call.
Commissioner Di Fabio? Commissioner Remedy Wiggani?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficanti?
Yes, agreements, letters. Yes, agreements letter A to F. We'll begin with facilities, powers.
Where's the listeners? A is an agreement with KL Quality Construction for remodeling the probate court hearing room in the estimated amount of $20,373 in general funds.
Thank you, sir. And lead, Phil Purrier.
Good, uh, good morning, Commissioners. Uh, B is an agreement with Prime Carpentry LLC for lead hazard control and healthy homes work at 796 Larkridge in the amount of $6,610. C is an agreement with W&amp;W Construction for the same type of work at 22841 Alliance Sebring Road in the amount of $55,955. And D is an agreement with Foundations for the Future uh, for lead hazard control and healthy homes work at 448 Imperial in the amount of $18,053, all non-general.
Thank you, Phil. Risk Management, Kathy Joan?
Good morning, everyone. This is an agreement with Facilities and Management Express LLC doing businesses FMX to provide facilities maintenance web-based software platform in the amount of $32,200 with renewal options. Now, that is our first year fee that includes transitional setup services. And what we're doing is I've worked with facilities. This is an updated, more advanced, uh, facility software platform that provides more, uh, comprehensive user experience, uh, for all the users. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. And sanitary, Jill?
Good morning, Commissioners. This is an agreement with Leonard Truck, Tray, and Trailer for repairs to 2009 Trail King Trailer ST10 in the estimated amount of $3,528.22 of non-general.
Thank you. Motion for the approval of number two agreements A to F. Second, roll call.
Commissioner De Fabio?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy Wiggety? Commissioner Traficanti?
Yes. Three, A, change orders. Sanitary, Jill?
Uh, this is a change order number two, and extra work orders number three and number four with AP Ouro Company for the Campbell Wastewater Treatment Grit Removal System, improvement number 522. Uh, and it's as follows, the change order number two, $29,580. Extra work order number three, $56,250. An extra work order number four, $75,613, and they're all non-general.
Thank you. Motion?
Motion for approval of number three change orders A.
Second, roll call.
Commissioner De Fabio?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy Wiggety?
Yeah.
Commissioner Traficanti?
Yes, resolutions?
Motion for approval of resolutions number one edition.
Second, roll call.
Commissioner De Fabio?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy Wiggety?
Yeah.
Commissioner Traficanti?
Yes. Revolutions, we have letters A to H. And, uh, at this time, I would like to introduce our new sanitary engineer, Bernie Petro. Bernie, if you come forward. Bernie will talk about himself and his qualifications, but I can't know you. His resume is exemplary. He's done yeoman's work over his career as an engineer, and I'll let him, uh, tell you a little bit about what he, what he's done. Bernie, congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Commissioners, for giving me this opportunity to, uh, lead an extraordinary team. I've been on the job a month, and, uh, I got to witness the transition of phase of, of me coming on board. And I'm gonna tell you, 100% of the sanitary engineering department is off the charts fantastic. So it's just, you know, and to me coming on, you know, I was on the other side of the fence. You know, designing, uh, water plants and, uh, water lines for other sanitary engineers. So it's very refreshing to come home and lead one, one department. And, uh, and I'm looking forward to it. People don't realize that we have 110 miles of sanitary sewer in Mahoney County. And we have five treatment plants, and we have 82 pump stations. And it's, it's a moving, it's a, it's a living organism. And it's a, it's a 24/7 operation. So I just want to thank you, the Commissioners, for the opportunity, and I'm looking forward to, uh, to a great time. Thank you.
Bernie was throwing in the food, food, as soon as he came on board.
Yeah, really?
There wasn't time to catch his breath. Thanks for handling that.
That was by fire.
Thanks for the great show.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, uh, letter B, ten.
Good morning, again. Um, this is a resolution to transfer from the General Fund to the Board of Health and the Sheriff's Department, um, $58,135.22 for expenses incurred.
Thank you. And engineers, Rick?
Good morning, Commissioners. Um, this is, this is a resolution approving the State of Ohio Agreement with Manic Smith Group. It's for the construction administration related to the Market Street Bridge Rehabilitation Project. It's in the amount of $350,181. It's non-general and 95% ODOT funds.
Thank you. Grants Management, Anna?
Good morning, Commissioners. This item is a resolution approving the agreement with NOPEC for the 2025 Energize Community Grant in the amount of $6,594. And this is an allocation, uh, that we receive annually from people who participate in NOPEC Energy, uh, Savings Program that was initiated at the time.
Thank you. Jobs and Family, Ms. Morales?
How, yeah, I can read it for. This is a resolution approving, um, the Mahoney County Title 20 County Profile for the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services for the period October 1st, 25 through September 30th, 26.
Thank you. And lead, Jill?
This is a resolution approving the, uh, moral obligation payment of $13,823.39 to residents in for relocation that occurred in between the end of our old contract and the beginning of our new.
Thank you. Other Judy, sanitary? Jill?
She is a resolution for approving an appointment of one sewer jet worker for the department.
Okay. And sheriffs, I think Anna was gonna do that.
Thank you, Commissioners. Uh, this is a resolution in support of a grant application to the Ohio Department of Rehabilitation and Corrections for the Targeted Community Alternatives to Prison Program and to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Common Police Court, the Sheriff's Office, and the Community Corrections Association.
Thank you. Okay.
Motion for approval of number two resolutions A to H.
Second, roll call.
Commissioner De Fabio?
Yeah.
Commissioner Remedy Wiggety?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficanti?
Yes, for the groupie order, any elected officials or department heads like- Gerald, Jill?
Yeah, I just, um, I'm visiting this weekend. Be safe. Uh, thank you all for coming to our meeting, and we would probably see you next week.
No? I just want to say we work on, we work on lots. But what we're, what we're doing, what we want to do with people, um, everybody's not cut dry. There's no, there's no solid plans. We haven't, we haven't come to the suit on anything yet. So I understand there's angst and anxiety and people are worried about it. It's not happening. That's the work of the facilities. I think we're gonna get it out. We'll have a great weekend, and I hope Mother Nature starts cooperating because it's still cold out. We only get one month. Come on, that's real. It's all really pretty. So high, we didn't dream you out, I'm gonna shine. Thank you, everybody.
The Lord is still in charge of the weather.
I just got all my Canadian pepper plants in the other day. It's like freezing out.
Just have one week.
No, thank you all for coming, and, um, I'd just like to say last night was, uh, I don't know if you know, even know who this band is, but my favorite band from high school, ACDC, finished their North American tour, uh, at Cleveland last night. And it was an overwhelming turnout. And I could barely hear. They're amazing. They're amazing. And then this weekend, uh, you have the Vennies opening for Leader Ford, and we're doing an autism, uh, celebration. I go meeting with the autism community, and we're doing a presentation uh, at the amphitheater downtown, and all this getting all of that arranged. So it's been a wonderful couple days, a hearings of three rock groups.
There's another game. It'd be a good job with Cavalli Sound. And who's that? Jacob Cavalli Sound. There's another band, and then-
It wasn't Kiss, but if somebody-
Compass is happening.
Somebody liked it. But, no, they were already there.
Kiss.
Uh, someone related to Kiss, though. I plan on going to it. Oh, please.
That's him, I. That's him, I. Leonard Skinner. Concert. Now, it was not concert, it's, uh, others concerts, you can all enjoy. By policy, ACDC concert. Awesome, awesome, awesome. Are they amazing? It's the first time I ever had the opportunity to see them, and it was probably the last. That sounds like thunder. It's unbelievable. Okay, this is your next, uh, meeting.
Let's do it, say it right here.
Okay. With that being said, a motion.
Get out.
Commissioner Traficanti?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy Wiggety? Commissioner Traficanti?
Thank you, everyone.